Welcome to the 10th Annual Bike with the Mayor. So this is a really cool... Welcome to the 10th Annual Bike with the Mayor. So this is a really cool event. It's a good community builder. It's very fun. We dialed in some good weather for this, as you can see. We really appreciate you being here. We really appreciate the partnerships we have with the community. This event is made possible primarily through the events of our... or the efforts of our sponsors, our staff also. But I really want to thank the folks here who are here from the Center for Urban Transportation Research, Cutter at USF. Those of you who live in Temple Terrace know that our relationships with USF go very deep, and right today, they're deeper than ever. We have a better relationship than we've ever had with USF. And so, thank you Cutter for all that you do for us. And I especially... Yes, please, thank you. Thank you very much. Especially want to talk about our relationship with the Florida Department of Transportation, who also makes this event possible. And I obviously know elected officials throughout the state, but... and also in other states. And we're in a very unique position because I don't think there's any other state where you actually hear people bragging about their Department of Transportation, right? That's not the... It's like animal control. It's not the kind of thing that people brag a lot about. But in Florida, and particularly in District 7, which is the district that we're in, we really do have it. I don't think the public understands how good we have it with our Department of Transportation here in District 7. And Paul's here with me today, but all the way from the Secretary David Dwan down to Justin Hall, who was supposed to be here and who's stuck in traffic, right? The irony to that strikes me. But they are tremendous for the city of Temple Terrace and for Hillsborough County and the region. They're tremendous, easy to work with. I don't know any place else where you can call the DOT, you text them, and they're on the spot, like, what do you need? And so, that is something that, go to another state, you don't get that.
Thank you. Appreciate the mayor's... Just thank you Mayor Ross for your support of this event, and the council as well, and Julie Bond over at Cutter. We really appreciate working together. You know, we are always looking to improve both pedestrian and bike safety. We do some lunchtime rides with folks from Cutter. They're hotspots, we call them, to see what the cyclists are actually experiencing on our roadway network and to see if there's improvements we can make. And it's a great event to just get people out, get in and riding, make sure they're wearing their helmets and staying safe, and get some lights out to people. I always keep a few in my car in case we see someone riding on the road without a light, especially young families, and try and give them some lights, keep them safe. And I think it's a beautiful day for a ride, and say we get to it.
So I thank you. And so, I do want to acknowledge... I should have done this, but it's early. I don't usually start this early. Sylvester, I do want to acknowledge some guests that are here also, our Vice Mayor, Meredith Abel is here. And Councilmember Gil Schuster's here somewhere. Where did Gil go?
He had a meeting at eight.
Oh, he had a meeting at eight. He was here. I can testify to that. I saw him. And so, some of our members are out of town, so they're here today. But so, Julie, are we doing any kind of a safety brief for anything, or are we just going to ride?
We do a quick safety brief, and then we'll line up for the photo, like we do.
Out here. Okay. And then we'll ride for... What are you, 30, 35 miles?
I mean, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
And also want to thank Sunita Temple Terrace Police for giving us an escort.
Yeah.
Yes.
Always better to have them in front of you than to land.
Yeah. Thank you for the place for doing this escort. Thank you for all the people that are here. I see some Temple Terrace Fire Departmenters that are here. She's going to kill me for this, but I want to thank Julie because I was just starting at Cutter like 10 years ago, and Julie's like, "I have this idea, and I don't know if anyone's going to do it, but what do you think about this?" And me and our colleagues and Julie, you know, we worked with the department in the city, and we put this event together. And 10 years later, here we are still doing it. So this is going to be just kind of a slow, casual ride. We're going to keep to the right. You know, it's not a race, so we're just going to try to keep together as a group as much as possible. You know, stay, you're two abreast, side by side, when we can. Just make sure that you're coming to a stop when you need to. We're going to have the police kind of help us block off traffic, so we don't have to stop too much. But if you have any problems, just let the person next to you know, and we'll try to help you out. So let's all have fun.
Meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. If you would, well, let me explain a little bit first. So we have a practice here in Temple Terrace that at Ramadan, we typically invite our members of our Muslim community here to receive... to say the invocation at the opening of our meeting. And in recognition of Passover, we do the same thing with Rabbi Rivkin is here to grace us with the invocation this evening. And so, if you would, please, remember to silence your electronic devices, and please stand and join us in the invocation and the pledge. Welcome, Rabbi.
Almighty God, I invoke your blessing today upon the legislative leaders gathered here at the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, as they prepare to work on behalf of the citizens of this great city. We ask you divine blessing for all of the city inhabitants, wherever they may be. Gathered here in a chamber of elected leadership in our prayer, let us recall the preeminent leader, the biblical Moses. Moses was not merely a leader who set guidelines and imparted knowledge to his people, but he also had the unique gift of being able to reveal every individual's inherent potential. Almighty God, please bestow the wisdom upon the elected leaders gathered here today so that we enable to work for all of this inhabitants of the city of Temple Terrace, of all ages, backgrounds, cultures, the ability to achieve our true potentials. Please give them the inspiration and humility to unite across all divides in the pursuit of a just, meaningful, and moral society, as was outlined in your seven universal laws you gave Noah and his descendants after the Great Flood, one of which, the command to govern by a just laws, is the purpose of our gathering here today. May it be your will, God Almighty, that the tireless efforts of all the city councilor members be successful in empowering all the individuals in this great city to be decent human beings, considerate of others, reverent of you, and ready to do their bidding towards the ultimate goal of a perfect world in which your presence will be manifest. As we come upon the Passover holiday, which commemorates the Exodus from Egypt, we hope and pray that all those suffering war across the world and all those hostages who are... should be in honor of this Passover holiday be speedily redeemed as our ancestors in Egypt. May it happen speedily in our days. Amen.
Rabbi, if you wouldn't mind remaining at the podium for a moment, and folks, if you please, join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, our own.
Thank you. Maybe Seeta Rabbi, would you like to say a few words? Thank you for being here.
Thank you for all your services, and it's a great city. The weather's beautiful at this time of year, and we're really enjoying. I guess you put me on the spot. I've spoken to you about the past in Pleasant Terrace, where our little synagogue is. The end of 122nd Avenue, I don't know if this is the right time to make this request, maybe, that should be considered is a... became a dog park, but the end of 127th, going on to 50th, might be able to be a children's park. Just wanted to bring that up, if that's possible. There's a lot of families and children, and there's no park out in that neck of the woods. We would greatly appreciate if somehow, I don't know, the budget is there for more parks.
Well, thank you for taking time out of your schedule to join us today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Okay. We have one other tradition in Temple Terrace, or city of traditions. And that is, this one actually is a new tradition that we started a couple of years ago, where we open the meetings with a... We called it a fun fact, and we quickly realized that some of these historical facts are not always as fun as that. So we just call it a historical or interesting fact about our city or the region of our city. So tonight, it's Councilmember Fernandez's turn.
Yes. So, welcome, everyone. And most of you know, Temple Terrace is a small city that was much smaller upon its founding, but it has grown over the years. And but one of the things that stayed very constant is that we have a deep history of volunteerism and dedication to the community. And that's what I would like to talk about tonight. So the three oldest groups in the city have been responsible for many changes and positive changes in the city. And right now, those three groups, the Garden Club, the Women's Club, and Junior Women's Club, actually run and help maintain Woodmont Clubhouse, which is one of our oldest structures in operation in the city. It was formerly, for those of you who remember, it was the stable that went with one of the original residents with her estate, and then it became a garage, and then it became the first schoolhouse in Temple Terrace. And now, those three organizations operate that as their meeting space and a gathering space for other people to have weddings or family events or whatever. So the Garden Club was actually founded in 1946, and that's the oldest club in the city. And there, you will see their work all over Woodmont Park. They're responsible for maintaining the flowers that you see in that park. And I think we can all agree, it is a very nicely flowered park. They also handle the roundabout that is, I think it's our only roundabout in the city, near the Florida College and the Country Club. They handle the flowers there, and they handle the flowers at Melick House, which is the hospice house. And I believe they also take care of the beds at the near Riverside Park. But I know that they... Their hand is very evident in the greenery and scenery in the city. And the Women's Club was founded in 1959, and that group is actually responsible for the first public library in Temple Terrace. And if some of you remember seeing pictures of it, it was extremely small. It was not here when I was a child, and not quite that old. But it was like basically kind of a little tiny building. And it's since grown through volunteer efforts and the community to be the library that we have now, that the community enjoys, and has been in its location. I'm not exactly sure when it was put there, but I moved here in '72, and I don't remember the library not being where it is. So... And then the Junior Women's Club was founded in 1958, and they've been responsible also for many projects throughout the city. One large project that a lot of people might be familiar with is originally getting the playground equipment, organizing and fundraising to get the playground equipment in conjunction with the city at Bonnie Bray Park. And that was in the '70s. And through the years, they've added to that equipment. And all of these groups have been very active in the community with many different events. And you can see the gazebo at River Hills Park. You can see the River Walk at River Hills Park, which are spearheaded by the Women's Club. So we have a great tradition of volunteering in the city. And we have other volunteer groups, such as the Rotary Club, those of you who went to Brew Fest this weekend, and that was a great... I didn't... Couldn't go this year, but it is always a great event. The Community Garden, that is an area where people come together and take a space that's otherwise sitting and not having any use, and put their garden beds there and grow all kinds of fruits and vegetables. The Juniors, which is a group of young women who are able to partner with other clubs in the community and have a great impact in volunteering and events. And then the Preservation Society is not as active as they have been in the past, but they have been a group that helps maintain the history of the city and showcase some of the historical items as well as information. But in addition to these volunteer boards that are completely private volunteer, nothing to do with the city itself, we have city-appointed boards. And these are very important boards in the city because they help you, as citizen, have a say all over various aspects of the city. So we have the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Board of Adjustment, the Centennial Committee, which you know we're approaching our 100 years, Code Enforcement Board, Historic Preservation Board, Library Board, River Watch Task Force, and the School Support Committee. So you can see that volunteer organizations have a huge impact on this city, and the many projects and events really help create the sense of community that I think brings a lot of people to Temple Terrace and keeps us living here. So I want everybody to think about, how can you give back to your city? I think that there is a project, an event, a group that fills all kinds of interests and needs. So I encourage every resident to find the place that interests you the most, and get out there and volunteer. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that. So, okay, we're done with traditions. So I'd like to call Mr. Chris Jeffords to the podium. He is the Victims Assistance Program. He works at the Victims Assistance Program for the State Attorney's Office in the 13th Judicial Circuit, and he is here with the Honorable Susie Lopez, our State Attorney for the 13th Judicial Circuit. And we have a proclamation that they're here to receive for National Crime Victims Rights Week. And they're certainly busy in this. It'd be nice, Chris, if you were not so busy.
Would they?
Yes. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Florida is a law and order state and will always provide a voice to crime victims and their families, National Crime Victims Rights Week provides the opportunity to recognize the importance of crime victims' services, ensures that victims have access to services and support, and promotes discussion on how communities, organizations, and professionals can work together to reach all victims. Dedicated victim service providers are working daily to meet the needs of crime victims, and we continue their efforts to expand services to victims who face barriers to meaningful access to services such as isolation, lack of transportation, language limitations, or cultural barriers. The Temple Terrace City Council wishes to commend the Hillsborough County Victims Assistance Program for providing exemplary services to the victims of crime within the city of Temple Terrace and throughout Hillsborough County. During National Crime Victims Rights Week, the city of Temple Terrace renews its commitment to providing survivors of crime the support they need to heal. As a community, let us all work together to stop crimes before they happen and to give victims the support they need to restore a sense of trust and safety to move towards healing and peace. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside April 21st through 27th as National Crime Victims Rights Week." And so, we would love for you guys to not have anything to do and not even need to have this, but we recognize that that's not a reality. And so, we thank you for being here, and we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to be here on behalf of our Victims Assistance Program and the State Attorney's Office. In the last almost two years, we've worked very hard to give a voice to victims and their families, and it has been my honor. I've met with 97 families who have lost loved ones as a result of a crime in Hillsborough County. That's, of course, 97, too many. But we could not do the job that we do. We... Our attorneys could not do the job that we do without our victim advocates. They work tirelessly to support victims of crime, and we're very proud of them, and we're proud to stand by them and to stand by victims of crime in Hillsborough County. And like you said, Mayor, we don't want to have to ever have this day, but in... But because we do, and I'm pleased to report that crime is actually down now, so we are seeing fewer people come in as victims into our system, but until that number is zero, we are here with them, and we stand with victims, and we're proud to do so with our Victims Assistance Program. And thank you for acknowledging this very important week that starts on the 21st.
Thank you for being here. I know you have a slightly busy schedule, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you, Mayor.
Nice to see you.
Sadly, statistics show that all of us are going to be a victim of crime probably multiple times in our lifetime, and that's a very sad statistic. So we want to make sure that victims' voices are heard. Too much talk gets with the defendants and defendants' rights. They seem to have more rights than victims. So we want to make sure that all victims get heard. And we have our Victims Rights poster for National Crime Victims Rights Week. We're doing a resource fair at the Sheriff's Office on the 25th, and we have 16 partners throughout the community. They're going to be providing resources for our victims. So that's a big deal for us. The first one we've ever had, and we're looking forward to it a week from Thursday.
That's true.
And thank you for having us. We really...
Thank you, and welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you for lending him to us. We're very grateful for him.
Let's give him a round of applause, folks.
Picture. Chief. That's a good idea. Thank you.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Yes. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite our City Attorney Pam Shoshon and our Deputy City Attorney Ernie Mueller to the podium. Well, don't look so enthused. This is a good thing. We're not going to give you more work. So we have a proclamation for Recognition of Law Day. And the proclamation reads, "In 1958, President Eisenhower proclaimed Law Day to honor the role of law in the creation of the United States of America. And every president since then has issued an annual Law Day proclamation. In 1961, May 1st was designated by Joint Resolution of Congress as the official date for celebrating Law Day, which is a special day aimed to help people in the United States appreciate their liberties and to affirm their loyalty to the United States, especially regarding equality and justice. It also aims to cultivate respect for the law, which is vital to the democratic way of life. The theme for Law Day 2024 is Voices of Democracy, which recognizes that in democracies, the people rule. For nearly 250 years, Americans have expressed their political views and wishes by speaking their mind and voting in elections. Members of the legal profession should lead the way in promoting democracy by taking individual responsibility not only to speak up and vote, but also find the courage to listen, to respect, and to agree on paths forward toward a more perfect union. In 2024, the United States will hold its 60th presidential election, and we encourage all Americans with the Law Day 2024 theme of Voices of the Democracy to participate in the 2024 elections by first, deepening their understanding of the electoral process, discussing important issues in honest and civil ways, by turning out to vote, and finally, helping to move the country forward after free and fair elections. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside May 1st, 2024, as Law Day in Temple Terrace." So, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I wanted to say a few things about Florida lawyers. The state of Florida has 94,066 attorneys who are members of the Florida Bar Association and are thus eligible to practice law. We also have 1,414 judges who are also members of the bar. And in the year ending June 2023, members of the Florida Bar donated nearly $7.5 million to various legal aid organizations, and they gave over $1.5 million hours of their time in pro bono services to provide access to the courts and access to justice for people who could not otherwise afford it. In Hillsborough County and Pinellas County, we have two agencies, Bay Area Legal Services and Gulf Coast Legal Services, that provide legal aid to senior citizens aged 60 and older, to veterans, to victims of domestic violence and of human trafficking, to those trying to obtain social security disability benefits, and to folks of low or no income in a variety of other areas, including landlord-tenant matters. So I encourage people to, if you know of somebody who cannot afford an attorney and who is in need, fits one of those categories, to please let them know about Bay Area Legal Services and Gulf Coast Legal Services.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Shoshon.
Thank you.
Mr. Mueller?
I'd like to just publicly...
Attorney didn't want to talk?
What's that?
Attorney didn't want to talk?
Yeah. I would like to take an opportunity. We don't normally have our... Both of our attorneys here in a public setting, and so I'd like to thank you for the work that both of you do on behalf of the city and let the public know that we get quarterly reports of, you know, we know on a daily basis kind of the big stuff, but we get quarterly reports of all the different things that our legal staff, the two of them, are doing, and all the cases, large and small, and the hearings and the court appearances and the various motions and replies to motions. And when you get the quarterly report, it's staggering. It really is, the work that two people do on behalf of our city. So I was on the council when we brought in in-house counsel as opposed to contracting out to a law firm, and I was on the council that helped to make that decision, and it was a good decision. And I can't ever imagine us going back to the previous model. These two have really done a terrific job. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
So next, it's an honor to have a good friend of our city, a good friend of our county, a good friend of our region, and a really terrific ambassador for the entire Tampa Bay area, and a good friend of Temple Terrace, and a good friend to me personally, Mr. Santo Carrada. Santiago Carrada, who's President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, is with us this evening to make a brief presentation about some of the activities that they have going on. And I get these briefings at the Visit Tampa Bay Advisory Board that I serve on, and it struck me a while back, like, you know, the public, our residents, need to hear some of this. This is terrific stuff. So thank you for joining us, Santiago.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ross, Honorable City Council, Madam City Attorney, Madam City Clerk, City Manager, those in our audience and those watching on TV. I am both humbled and excited to be here. I can't believe I've been serving Hillsborough County for over 20 years, and this is my first time in these chambers. So I hope the next invite won't take 20 years. Love to come back and share some great news about our home and our destination, which is doing so very, very well. So with that, I'm going to move very, very quickly through the presentation. Visit Tampa Bay, for those of you that may not know...
Hold on. Got to...
It's not on?
No.
The first...
There you go.
Ah! And I'm... Thank you. Visit Tampa Bay is a 501(c)(6) charitable organization under contract with Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa to sell, market, advertise, and promote all of Hillsborough County all over the country and all over the world. I would often say that we were all about bringing people here to spend their money and to go home, but as you'll see in my presentation, we do way more than that these days because we also market for economic development, and tourism is big business. Be nice to those out-of-town plates. I think we can all agree, we love not having an income tax, and in the state of Florida, a quarter of the sales tax collected is from tourists and visitors. So those Ohio plates, those Michigan plates, we love them. Thank you for visiting and spending some time with us. Our vision is to inspire the world to love Tampa Bay, and that happens through marketing and advertising. I think some of you know, last year... The theme for Law Day 2024 is Voices of Democracy, which recognizes that in democracies, the people rule. For nearly 250 years, Americans have expressed their political views and wishes by speaking their mind and voting in elections. Members of the legal profession should lead the way in promoting democracy by taking individual responsibility not only to speak up and vote, but also find the courage to listen, to respect, and to agree on paths forward toward a more perfect union. In 2024, the United States will hold its 60th Presidential Election, and we encourage all Americans with the Law Day 2024 theme of Voices of the Democracy to participate in the 2024 elections by first deepening their understanding of the electoral process, discussing important issues in honest and civil ways, by turning out to vote, and finally, helping to move the country forward after free and fair elections. Now, therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside May 1st, 2024, as Law Day in Temple Terrace. So, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I wanted to say a few things about Florida lawyers. The state of Florida has 94,066 attorneys who are members of the Florida Bar Association and are thus eligible to practice law. We also have 1,414 judges who are also members of the bar. And in the year ending June 2023, members of the Florida Bar donated nearly $7.5 million to various legal aid organizations, and they gave over $1.5 million hours of their time in pro bono services to provide access to the courts and access to justice for people who could not otherwise afford it. In Hillsborough County and Pinellas County, we have two agencies, Bay Area Legal Services and Gulf Coast Legal Services, that provide legal aid to senior citizens aged 60 and older, to veterans, to victims of domestic violence and of human trafficking, to those trying to obtain social security disability benefits, and to folks of low or no income in a variety of other areas, including landlord-tenant matters. So, I encourage people to, if you know of somebody who cannot afford an attorney and who is in need, fits one of those categories, to please let them know about Bay Area Legal Services and Gulf Coast Legal Services.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Shoshon.
Thank you.
Mr. Mueller?
I'd like to just publicly...
Attorney didn't want to talk?
What's that?
Attorney didn't want to talk?
Yeah. I would like to take an opportunity. We don't normally have our... Both of our attorneys here in a public setting, and so I'd like to thank you for the work that both of you do on behalf of the city and let the public know that we get quarterly reports of, you know, we know on a daily basis kind of the big stuff, but we get quarterly reports of all the different things that our legal staff, the two of them, are doing, and all the cases, large and small, and the hearings and the court appearances and the various motions and replies to motions. When you get the quarterly report, it's staggering. It really is, the work that two people do on behalf of our city. So, I was on the council when we brought in in-house counsel as opposed to contracting out to a law firm, and I was on the council that helped to make that decision, and it was a good decision. And I can't ever imagine us going back to the previous model. These two have really done a terrific job. So, thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
So, next, it's an honor to have a good friend of our city, a good friend of our county, a good friend of our region, and a really terrific ambassador for the entire Tampa Bay area, and a good friend of Temple Terrace and a good friend to me personally, Mr. Santo Carrada, Santiago Carrada, who's President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, is with us this evening to make a brief presentation about some of the activities that they have going on. And I get these briefings at the Visit Tampa Bay Advisory Board that I serve on, and it struck me a while back, like, you know, the public, our residents, need to hear some of this. This is terrific stuff. So, thank you for joining us, Santiago.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ross, Honorable City Council, Madam City Attorney, Madam City Clerk, City Manager, those in our audience and those watching on TV. I am both humbled and excited to be here. Can't believe I've been serving Hillsborough County for over 20 years, and this is my first time in these chambers. So, I hope the next invite won't take 20 years. Love to come back and share some great news about our home and our destination, which is doing so very, very well. So, with that, I'm going to move very, very quickly through the presentation. Visit Tampa Bay, for those of you that may not know... Thank you. Visit Tampa Bay is a 501(c)(6) charitable organization under contract with Hillsborough County and the City of Tampa to sell, market, advertise, and promote all of Hillsborough County, all over the country and all over the world. I would often say that we were all about bringing people here to spend their money and to go home, but as you'll see in my presentation, we do way more than that these days because we also market for economic development, and tourism is big business. Be nice to those out-of-town plates. I think we can all agree, we love not having an income tax, and in the state of Florida, a quarter of the sales tax collected is from tourists and visitors. So, those Ohio plates, those Michigan plates, we love them. Thank you for visiting and spending some time with us. Our vision is to inspire the world to love Tampa Bay, and that happens through marketing and advertising. I think some of you know, last year, Time Magazine named our home one of the greatest places on earth. Fortune Magazine mentions us often, The Wall Street Journal, Conde Nast just announced that Tampa, this region, was Florida's "it" destination. So, we're very, very proud of all the attention that this destination is getting, and our values are super important. I was looking at some of the values on the wall here, and inclusivity, being ethical, being relevant, being forward-thinking are all the values that are instilled in our organization, and obviously, our commitment to social inclusion. In Hillsborough County, we collect 6% at every overnight stay in a hotel, Airbnb, VRBO campsite. It's the most that can be collected by any county. It's authorized by state statute, and it's collected at the county level, comes from hotels to the county, and then the county disperses the dollars. We have an interesting breakdown of the 6% in Hillsborough County. Every county in Florida is a little bit different. We have four buckets, the first 3%, and 75% goes to Visit Tampa Bay, another 25% goes to support other things in our destination. 1% goes to Raymond James Stadium, another to Amalie Arena, and then the last percent, 30% goes to Visit Tampa Bay, and then a lot of the other dollars go to other things. And what's really interesting about this is when I make this presentation, I've done it three times today, we say the 75% and the 30% add up to 40%. And I'm not crazy. That's what our budget is. 75 and 30 equal 40%. And by state statute, when your county is investing in capital projects, a minimum of 40% should go to advertising and marketing. This is a self-imposed tax by the hotel industry to further promote a destination. And this is the whole breakdown of the entire amount. You're probably wondering what that amount equals. Well, last year, we hit a record in what we call the Tourist Development Collection, was almost $65 million on $1.1 billion of hotel revenue, and this is how that pie is broken out. And just to put that in perspective, so that you know how very well we're doing, when I joined this organization, left City Hall, I was with the mayor in Tampa and started doing this almost 11 years ago, hotel revenues in Hillsborough County were $423 million, and last year, we broke $1.1 billion. So, we're doing very, very well when it comes to hospitality. Here, you'll see hotel performance year over year, and what's really interesting about this is that hotel revenues were up almost 5% over the prior record, and we saw a little dip in occupancy, and our hotel folks are okay with that, as long as the revenue is up. They're okay with occupancy being a little bit down. But then, when we look at this past February, second-best tourism month in the history of Hillsborough County, only second to last year's March, and we're waiting to see what this March looks like, but you can see compared to Florida and the United States on those four key variables, occupancy, average daily rates, revenue per all available rooms, and revenue, we're doing very, very well against not just Florida, but the rest of the U.S. that, in some cases, is still in recovery mode after COVID. And then, if you look at the last three years, don't get too concerned with that 81.7%. Anytime you're over 80%, you're stellar. So, it's very, very hard to continue to do better than the prior year when you're over 80%. But when you look at revenues there in February for all of Hillsborough County, almost 26,000 rooms, and I want to stay with your tradition of little-known facts, so Law Day, most of our attorneys know that if you want to be an attorney in Florida, you come to the Tampa Convention Center to take the bar exam. That's been going on for decades. And then, on the hotel side, we have four hotels in Temple Terrace, 453 rooms of the 26,000 rooms can be found here in Temple Terrace, and that tells me we need more hotels. We need more hotels in Temple Terrace, and we often talk about that private investment. The industry breaks down Hillsborough County into four sub-markets. The north is your sub-market. Sometimes, it blends a little bit with east, but it's really north Tampa, and you see there the figures for north Tampa for February. And the impact in Hillsborough County is huge. We have approximately 27 million visitors to Hillsborough County a year. They spend over $8.5 billion in our local economy because most visitors don't come to a destination and hide in their hotel room and watch television. You know, they visit a destination, they want to experience it like the locals, they want to get out to unique restaurants, they want to see attractions, they want to go to museums, festivals, events, so they spend a lot of money, not just on a hotel. And then, we have a number of initiatives. One is the Memory Makers Initiative, where we really salute hospitality heroes that are frontline and make our destination very unique and special. This is Pamela Calhoun. She works in one of the nearby hotels to this city, and so, we featured her, and I think there's a quick video vignette for her.
I don't think you knew. I had to tell you that there was a video.
Okay. Well, she's great. She's saying wonderful things. The people love her at the hotel. She's received numerous awards for her dedication to the hotel, and she is, again, one of our local community heroes. Our campaign strategies are to talk about this juxtaposition between being a very relaxing destination and a very exciting destination. A lot of our graphics and collateral, you wouldn't see right here at home because we're not allowed to spend money here at home. We're allowed to bring in people from out of the area, not to market to our locals, and our objectives are always to drive incremental visitation. And this is some of the material you would see in other parts of the country and other parts of the world. You see there Mozy being highlighted. It's hard to tell. It looks like the aquarium and maybe the zoo. We were one of the first destination leadership organizations to use Carver ties. That meant we wrapped Uber and Lyft vehicles all over the world. Now, we wrap them completely around, so if you're in a high-rise in Chicago and you're looking down, you see Tampa from your high-rise in Chicago or Boston or New York City. So, again, our campaigns are very successful. And since we don't do a lot of work locally because we're not allowed to, we like to compile videos of us out in the wild. So, no need for sound on this, but you'll get the hint here when you look at what we do in other parts of the country. with the city to market and sell the convention center 18 months in out, and the marketing around conventions, meetings, and events is very, very different than when we're trying to appeal to tourists or leisure travelers. So, the messaging is very, very different, really shows off all the assets. And then, we've really launched a number of initiatives around accessibility. We partner with Travelability, Wheel the World. We came up and developed our own Riverwalk Accessibility Pass, and Chroma, believe it or not, is an organization that provides glasses for individuals that are colorblind. And we love having those available when we have visitors visiting museums and attractions so they can enjoy those attractions like many of us do. And then, we're a partnership organization. We're very, very proud of the diversity of our small minority-owned businesses. We make sure that they are connected to the hospitality industry when we have visitors, conventions, major events. And then, we have our Visitor Center in downtown Tampa, the Unlock Tampa Bay Visitor Center with all product curated and in and about this region. So, we have our own artists, we have our own product developers, we developed our own product. So, if you're looking for something uniquely Hillsborough County, Tampa, you'll find it in that store, including, we just announced, Monopoly just released its own Tampa-Hillsborough County edition of Monopoly, 35th City, to have a Monopoly board, and who knew that Monopoly was so special? Over $2.5 billion people have played the game since the early 1900s, and so, we're very, very proud to have our own Monopoly board now. I was at Barnes &amp; Noble last night, and I was like a proud papa when I saw them being sold at Barnes &amp; Noble. We can't keep them on the shelf, but we have lots of major announcements. Just a few days from today, Michelin, the Michelin Guide of Restaurants will be announcing all of our new Michelin restaurants for the area right here in Tampa, and we just announced a direct flight to Aeromexico, to Mexico City on Aeromexico starting in July. And incredibly enough, we hadn't had a direct, a daily flight to Mexico since the 1990s. So, we're very, very pleased of all those developments. And then, we have lots of partner activations with almost 900 partners. We have a number of those activations, a number of events where we really give back to the community, including T.O.F. Tourism, where we raise scholarship dollars for young people wanting to enter into our industry, but a number of events, and your mayor attends most of those, your city manager has been to some of those, so we appreciate the support that we get from Temple Terrace. You can partner with us, you can see what we're doing all over social media, and then we have a number of affiliated partner organizations. We were the first in the state to develop a small marketing district that focuses on downtown, the Riverwalk, and Ebor City. We do marketing for that district. We do talent relocation with the Economic Development Council under the auspices of Make It Tampa Bay, not Visit Tampa Bay. Make It Tampa Bay for your new home, for your new job, to relocate a corporate office. So, we also do that marketing for Economic Development Council. Film Tampa Bay lives with us, and they do a heck of a lot of work all over Hillsborough County with commercial shoots, digital advertising, movies, streaming, you name it, they do it all. The Tampa Bay Sports Commission, incredible sports commission, we're very, very lucky to have them. They work very closely with USF right down the road here. In fact, we just crowned a new national champion women's basketball team. Next year, we host the Women's Final Four here in Tampa. It'll be our fifth time hosting, as well as we've hosted five Super Bowls in Hillsborough County. So, our sports commission is very, very dynamic. And then, we have the International Trade and Protocol Officer that lives with us, the Disney ESPN Union Home Mortgage Gasparilla Bowl, long name, but you got to get them all in there, and then, of course, the Friends of the Tampa Riverwalk, all organizations that work symbiotically with ours. I know I had 15 minutes. I hope I kept it to the 15 minutes. I always like to follow the rules. Don't know, Mayor, if there are any questions, but I'm really, really grateful to be here. Thank you so much for the invite. Again, 20 years may be too long, so I'm... If I come back in 20 years, I may be in trouble.
Santiago, I wish that everybody could have the opportunity to sit at the meetings that I sit through with you at the various presentations because they're phenomenal, and it's this only in much more detail. There is a figure, I don't know if you can recall it, I'm trying to come up with it. If we backed out tourism dollars out of Hillsborough County's economy, there's a number associated with that. Every household would have to pony up like $700, I think?
An additional $700 in taxes because of, I believe it was 714. It changes every year. The last number was, I think, $714, and that's because of the economic impact that tourists have to our destination. They pay the sales tax like we do, they pay the education tax, and then, when you think about all the entities that make up the industry that pay property taxes to either Temple Terrace, Plant City, City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, it's quite an impact. If you can imagine how much a hotel pays in property taxes, or an attraction, or, you know, another restaurant, they really help with the quality of life by paying taxes that normally we would have to pay. And again, we're blessed to not have an income tax. I know we've motivated people to move here, and sometimes, their biggest raises have been not having an income tax that they had in some other state in the country.
Well, the other thing that I've learned through my association with you guys is that, you know, we tend in Temple Terrace to think, well, you know, we're not, we don't have Raymond James Stadium, we don't have the arena, we don't have, so what impact does that have on us? It has a tremendous impact on us, and where was I going with that? Oh, just the downstream benefits of just the cruise industry alone. I remember one presentation, you were talking about, every time a cruise ship docks here, the stuff that goes onboard that cruise ship as they turn in the port, all the way down to local florists who make gazillions of dollars off of these cruise ships that come into the port, and that's Temple Terrace folks don't always recognize. You don't have to be in the tourism business to derive the benefits of this.
Well, you know, Mayor, when we have a big event and it's focused on downtown or westshore, those hotel rooms are taken up, so there's compression out. If somebody wants to visit Hillsborough County, they'll stay in Temple Terrace because the inventory is, it's taken up in downtown or westshore. So, we look at compression numbers and how the visitor impact goes way beyond those traditional locations, that, oh, it's a downtown thing, it's a westshore thing. It really isn't. It's a Hillsborough County thing. And when you look at how that spreads, and I'm glad you brought up cruise ships, we invest in not only airlift, like we just did with Aeromexico, but we also just invested with Margaritaville at Sea, which will be a new ship that we'll call Tampa, its home. There are only two ships in the fleet right now. The first they inherited was down in West Palm Beach, and we will be launching ours this summer, and they are super excited because they feel their brand really goes more with Tampa, Hillsborough County than maybe West Palm Beach, so they're very, very excited to launch also this summer. So, we've got a lot of launches coming up with airlines and cruise ships, and like I said, the attention of the nation is on Tampa, Hillsborough County, and indeed, the world, because we're seeing more lift and more people internationally wanting to come here.
Councilmember's questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez.
When you are doing market research to create your advertising campaigns, do you come across trends in what people are looking for in travel? And then, when you come across those trends, do you share those with various economic development people?
That's a great question, and yes, 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 right? We don't market the destination like other Florida cities market their destination. We rarely talk about palm trees and the sun and the water. We really focused on what made Tampa genuinely Tampa, Hillsborough County, because that's what visitors were looking for. Visitors have become very sophisticated. That's why we've seen disruptors like Airbnb and VRBO. They want to come and experience a destination like the locals, and so, we wanted to market and advertise this region in that way. We wanted people to know that when you come to Temple Terrace, Plant City, the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, you're going to be in for a very unique experience. So, our images, our inclusiveness, really focus on that trend that people are looking now for very, very special experiences. They're kind of tired of the cookie-cutter thing, and then, generationally, we also have to look at what piques the interest of generational travelers. What might work for a millennial may not work for a boomer, right? So, you look at, you know, what really piques that curiosity? Is it the culinary scene? Is it history? Is it the arts? Is it culture? We market all of it very distinctly Tampa, Hillsborough County, because we want to make sure that the visitor that is looking for that very, very special experience knows they will have it here. And we do very, very well. Those numbers, when you're looking at over 80% occupancy, and think about that, that's eight out of every 10 rooms in every hotel is being occupied, and probably, those other two, you don't want to occupy, right? So, rooms are being turned over, rooms are being renovated. So, again, when we talk about 80% or more occupancy, and we've had days over 90, when we had Taylor Swift play three nights in Tampa, hotel occupancy Hillsborough County-wide was over 94% all three nights. So, when we host big events like that, we really see a bump, and we're very data-driven. So, we can see day by day, we could compare this day-to-day to the same day last year, and how much better we're doing this year versus last year, the year before, the year before, the year before. So, we're really data-driven and invest the money the right way because we don't have the war chest that some other destinations have. And to put that in perspective for you, our tourism collection and private revenue gives us about $30 million to work with every year. My friends down in Orange County, over there in Orlando, have over $100 million, and my friends right across the bay in Pinellas have close to $70 million. So, we need to make sure we're marketing and advertising, following those trends, what's going on, and making sure that converts into a visitor and an economic spend for us.
Santiago, thank you for being here. I know you've had a long day.
Starting in Plant City, I'm ending in Temple Terrace, so today is a great day. Great day for me.
Thank you, and thank you for letting him drag you along. Appreciate that. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you all so very, very much.
Counsel, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our April 2nd meeting? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second. Any adjustments, corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? The minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? There are forms in the back of the room if anybody wishes to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We do have a 30-minute time limit for this section of our meeting. We rarely meet that, but if we did meet that, we would move ahead with our next agenda items and then resume public comment at the conclusion of... items and then resume public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. I currently have no requests to address the counsel. I see one approaching. There is a three-minute time limit imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence, and then you have the floor for three minutes. Welcome back, Rabbi.
Uriel Rifkin, City of Temple Terrace. Every time, every year when you make me do the benediction, I think of, we mentioned earlier at Park, and I was listening to Allison say that in the 70s, some group helped donate some of the equipment for a park. So just, just again, to, on 122nd Avenue, maybe one day it could get on the agenda, I don't know, there's an empty lot owned by Temple Terrace and Pleasant Terrace on 122nd Avenue, as well as there's that City of Tampa, well, no, it's, it's the 50th Street that, once they closed it off, that they made the dog park at 122nd, there's that empty area on 127th Avenue as well, empty areas. Like, we have a mini park in our 52nd towards Fletcher, and people randomly from the city just use it, because there's no park in Pleasant Terrace and lots of multifamily and families. I know it involves Hillsborough County or who to deal with for the dog park, but that area, Pleasant Terrace, and sometimes we feel like we were annexed, okay? And the City of Tampa owns the water lines, and there's no sewer, there's all septic, that's another issue. But for parks, again, if, if there's ever a meeting or a group that could think about additional parks, it was annexed, used to be Hillsborough County, in the year 2000, Temple Terrace annexed that area of Pleasant Terrace, but there is no park in that area. That's it. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address the counsel? Yes, sir.
Andy Ralston, Mayor, and the council, councilmembers. My name is Tyrone, Coach Tyrone Rem at Greco Middle School. Been there four, I see some familiar faces. I'm also the CEO of Rank Up, I remember your face, there, Mr., CEO of Rank Up Athletics, as well, and a scout professionally, collegiately, and we work with the youth in the community. We are going to be playing a professional showcase game. The game will be played in Ocala, originally where I'm from. Former football player had a little experience with Oakland Raiders professionally, but I would like for the community to come out to Greco Middle School. It will be June 21st at Greco Middle School in the gym. We'll be playing against Team USA International. They play professional teams all over the country, they just played Costa Rica, Mexico, Japan, et cetera. My showcase agency as well is Rank Up Athletics. We are also playing teams over in Australia and overseas. So I will get the material for you all. I do have some, some photos here for you all to have for yourself for Team USA and Rank Up Athletics. It'll be a media day, it'll be a signing day for the kids, and the adults will come out to Greco Middle School at the gym to sign autographs. It will be great. We're not a 501(c)(3) yet, we're LLC, but if we can get any help from you all to donate food or anything for that particular event at the school, I've been at Greco Middle School now for 14 years, I'm very big in doing a lot of things that I can for the community and for the youth as well. I think the council has come out, couple of years ago, we had an event at the school, we had vendors, it was amazing, people came out. So I would like to be a contributor to Temple Terrace. I've been here now 14, 15 years now, and after I played ball. But we would love to see if you guys help us promote this event for June 21st at the school, because we're going to play on June 22nd the game. And I want to bring a big game like this every year to Temple Terrace. So, but as of right now, so everybody can get a field and meet all the, the owner, the coaches for Team USA and Rank Up Athletics, it'll be, and these are professional athletes. And I would like to announce that with all the hard work of scouting and work that we've put in, we now have five Rank Up Athletics free agent football players that will have a chance to have, to play in the NFL after the draft in two weeks. So they're not going to get drafted, but they have a chance for free agency. And this is what we want to bring to the community to show that if any of your kids, collegiically, male or female, need our assistance to help you professionally or collegiically, you can come to Rank Up Athletics, to the showcase agency. But we would, we would love for you guys to come out June 21st at Greco Middle School to meet Team USA and Rank Up Athletics.
Thank you, Coach, for being here. If you have materials, you can just leave them with the city clerk, and she'll make sure they get distributed.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to address the counsel? Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, moved.
Second.
All those, I think you got it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, consent agenda is adopted. Next, is a resolution approving the Riverwatch Task Force Vision and Mission Statement and Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year 24. Chairman of the Riverwatch Task Force, Meade Lewis, is here to explain. Welcome, Mr. Lewis.
As always, thank you so much for having me. I've prepared a short presentation to go over some of the things that we've accomplished in the previous months with the Riverwatch Task Force. But when we're addressing the current change in vision and mission statement, I want to highlight that our objective here is kind of to widen our, really what we can do. The Riverwatch Task Force was originally founded in order to, in order to help alleviate drought conditions and fight back against, you know, our water being completely taken from us. But now we're evolving. There's many more water options for Tampa in particular to choose from, and so our river seems to be more, more stable nowadays. And so broadening our scope, I think, is good use of city resources. Speaking of that use, this is one of the projects that we took on, Operation Severed Pepper is kind of what the, we came up with, where we were taking on the Brazilian pepper tree, which is, as you recall, an invasive species that's really running amok here in Florida. So we came at this with five objectives. We wanted to remove the Brazilian pepper tree plants from the West River Preserve. We wanted to create a scalable pathway for the Riverwatch Task Force to host volunteer and educational events, and I want to highlight the word scalable there. We also wanted to gauge community interest in such events, because it doesn't make much sense putting a lot of time into making this happen if nobody's interested. And we wanted to educate the public on proper removal of the Brazilian pepper tree, because it's, once again, a gnarly thing to contend with.
Let me interrupt you just for a second, Mr. Lewis. We didn't notice this presentation on our agenda. We were, we noticed the discussion on the vision and mission statement.
Allison.
Is there an action item to be taken on this, or, because the public hasn't been notified that this was going to be?
The vision and mission statement.
Okay, so we're going to have to go through this, we can't take action on this at all tonight.
It's not about action, it's just.
All right, but we're going to have to move through it, because the next item, there is action, and that's, so, we're, I don't know how long this is going to take.
Like, two minutes.
Okay.
If that.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
And we wanted to come in on budget. I want to highlight bad news first. This was a learning experience for us. We came in well over budget, primarily, you'll see highlighted under trash bags, dumpsters, and removals. All of those were kind of overlooked and not really accounted for in our original budget, but if we removed those, we are only 25% above budget. We can blame online shopping or inflation for that. But the actual impact was that we got 18 volunteers. Actually, some of them are with us today, Troop 120. And the ages were between age nine and 66, which I thought was an incredible spread. Waivers were collected for each individual, some of which immediately applied to join the Temple Terrace Riverwatch Task Force, which was dying for new members. 45 man-hours were spent between all of this. That's cutting, hauling, dumping, educating, and everybody got a safety course completed. And this was during the original date for your bike ride, so 26 mile-an-hour winds, heavy rains, it was, it was pretty miserable. But the impact was huge. And, you know, I'm not the most eloquent speaker, but I think pictures can speak better than I can. And I like this one, because you can actually see the physical dent that we made in the tree line there. That was all Brazilian pepper tree. And you can see how big those roots were and how they're just a cluster of this growth. But this is probably the most impactful. So originally, we were given one dumpster, this is how much we collected. So just a massive amount of this plant. And what I can say is that either 100% or maybe near 100% eradication of Brazilian pepper tree from West River Preserve was achieved. And it's an expensive epidemic. Cape Coral, city just south of here, right, just announced two years ago that they allocate $800,000 for removing this plant from their city borders, and they even cut that down. They're really only looking at 6,500 acres. So in totality, just a small 12-acre project, we saved the city roughly 22 or $222, by my estimates, using Cape Coral's math. If we were to expand these efforts across the city, it'd be $612,000 in savings if we were using, if we were using volunteer efforts. We learned a lot, all right, I'm trying to keep this presentation short, so sorry, but we learned a lot. We need to create backup days, we need to work better with Jason for the cleanup side of things, the actual dumpster and removal side. And we also need to do a better job at planning. But all in all, mission success. We removed every plant twice what was, what we originally anticipated. We need to work, once again, more on planning, but we've created these volunteer forms, so now for future volunteer events, we're streamlined. We've done a great job at engaging the community and getting an idea of how much interest there is. We trained the public and, once again, work on the budget. This was a great quote that we got from a neighbor who lives right beside the park. "In 45 years of living next to this park, I've never seen a volunteer effort like this." And so I'm very proud of what the Temple Terrace Riverwatch Task Force is accomplishing, what we can accomplish with this new mission and vision statement. Thank you.
Are you going to speak to the agenda items?
So, so I really wanted to address a few things for the agenda item. First and foremost, most of the changes that were made were not, were about changing the word for, to focus more on what's called the watershed. All right, the watershed in particular, what we're talking about is everywhere that, yes, where the river flows to and where the river's flowing through, but also expanding upon that, such as water conservation, which currently we're seeing a massive droughts, you know, we're on these water restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. And that's one of the big things that we want to focus on in this next phase of the Temple Terrace Riverwatch Task Force, as well as these volunteer efforts that, once again, deal with flora and fauna, or the exact verbiage within the, within the mission and vision statement. You will, I have discussed with the task force about some of the changes being more broad in nature, but a lot, a lot of the language was just taken from the, from the original document that we are operating on for the last number of years.
Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmember's questions?
One thing, I just want to point out.
Councilmember Fernandez.
I know there was a little bit of confusion when we originally received the documents, but the changes, so these documents are what was in effect, with the exception of what, of the words that are in bold. So the changes that the Riverwatch Task Force is proposing are the text that's in bold print. The rest of the text here is existing. It's what they're currently operating under. Okay? So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I don't have questions.
Questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Schistler.
What was TAC?
TAC?
Yeah.
That'd be.
Technical Advisory.
Yeah. Technical Advisory Committee to the Riverboard.
Okay, all right, I was just curious, I didn't know what that was. And so you're, the watershed, define that a little better for me.
Yeah, so watershed is, you know, we've all seen the charts, right? Where water precipitates down, lands on the street, and then flows eventually into the river, which then flows into the ocean eventually, right? But what we're focusing on is obviously the watershed that's based around the Hillsborough River. And really, that incorporates everything in Temple Terrace in some way or another, because this is, we're surrounded by it, right? And so when you're watering your lawn, for example, and you put, you know, fertilizer into your grass, that eventually is going to make its way to the water, into our river, and cause an explosion of duckweed or several other issues. And similarly, if we're running up our aquifer here, then the river, we're barely going to be able to use it. And so it's not just about the river itself, which is one aspect of it, but it's also upstream from that.
And there was another line in here, continued relationship with the task force as a subject matter expert.
Yes, so, so one of the, the group that we have within the Temple Terrace Riverwatch Task Force, you know, we all are smart people, but, you know, there, it's not that we all have PhDs or something, right? And so it's sometimes valuable to get, to get these folks who can educate us on how to better advise the city council to come in and do a short presentation similar to, you know, what you have in these meetings as well.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a question. I have comments, so any other questions?
I have comments, too.
No.
No other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, appreciate it. Thanks for being here, and thanks for your service, and good job with the peppers.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Fernandez, since you're the liaison.
So the original creation of the Riverwatch Task Force was because the City of Tampa relies on our area of the river as their water storage. And in all of the interactions with Tampa and Hillsborough County, they were referring to our, our section as a reservoir and not as a river. So this committee was, this task force was formed to have these entities basically respect this part of the river as a river. And they've achieved this goal, in that before, the focus was entirely on the reservoir aspect and the flow over the dam for the lower river. And there was no focus on the health, basically, as a river and an environmental location for the middle river. But now, at this time, this, this task force has achieved this, because these other entities refer to the river as the upper river, the middle river, which is what we are, and then the lower river, and they've, we've achieved, I think, the goal that we originally set for this task force. And then they, so they were tasked with widening their focus into more areas of environmental aspects around the river. So this is what that task force came up with. That's it.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, the middle river is still legally classified as a reservoir?
It is, but it is, it is in swift mud, at City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, they are understanding that they can't, they have to treat this as a part of the river and not just a reservoir.
But there was a state designation?
It is.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good. Councilmember Schistler.
I, I'm a little surprised with the expansion of what's trying to be done here, and I could be completely in left field. It seems to me that it's, the, the, the task force is, is taking a big chunk out of swift mud rules and so forth, and I'm not sure how swift mud would react to, to doing, with us being associated with water levels, water quality, flora and, excuse me, flora and fauna, diversification species, you know, monitoring advances. species, you know, monitoring advances in, I'm sorry, what was wanted here, where is it, in landfills and things of this nature. I just have some concerns of getting awful big. It's gonna, and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna add a significant layer of administrative responsibility to the, to the administration, the government, to City Hall, in my opinion. I'm a little concerned with it, with, it's getting a little bit bigger than I think the intention was, but this is a personal opinion. And I'll stop it there.
Councilmember Abel?
I see the document that's proposed, and I also see in our backup the information from fiscal year 2020. And Councilmember Fernandez, you said the stuff in bold is the only changes, but it looks like the whole second page is different from 2020. I was just a little confused about that.
Well, what I was told by staff is that the only change is, so if you look at the goals and the first goal, this is from 2020, all of the text is the same. The only thing that's changed is instead of wildlife, it says flora and fauna. So that, that is the only change in, in that first goal. There don't appear to be any changes until you get down to engage city leaders, and it just says issues concerning the Hillsborough River and associated watershed. I mean, I'm looking at the one that's, that's marked 2020. So the only changes I see to this vision and mission statement is what's in bold.
Yes, but it seems like the goals have been expanded a good deal. Yeah, between, between the older one and the current one I'm looking at, yeah.
Check this. This is page two.
I've got that. Maybe I don't have that.
This is the proposal.
No, I have that. Okay, yeah, okay.
The second page is substantially...
Completely different, yes.
And it's not all in bold?
No, it is not, but I was told that it was, that that's the change, so...
Page two is altogether different.
So, to continue, I guess my concern is, I don't want there to be overlap between what our River Watch Task Force is doing and what perhaps SWF MUD is doing. I feel like some of the things in here are good, like increasing the volunteer and, I don't, I can't really read, I need my glasses to actually see the exact words, but the mission and vision, I don't have, I don't have a problem with adding the word watershed to it. But I do want to make sure I understand the full implications of that. So anything on the land that can go into the water is included in the watershed, but it needs to be relevant to, you know, the health of the river for that to, I guess I'm just a little unclear on what the, the full implications of adding that language to the mission statement is.
So I have some concerns also, and I'm, I too am a little confused because some of, obviously, the bolded stuff is new, but it looks like there's other stuff that's new also on page two. It looks like the whole thing is new even though it's not bolded. I have, I respectfully see it a little differently. I do have concerns about adding the watershed. The Hillsborough River watershed is huge. That, that is huge. It's not even all in Hillsborough County. This, this goes into other counties if you, by the definition of the watershed. And I am concerned about creating a, I'm not concerned at all about expanding this to things inside the city, the invasive species eradication and then looking at water quality, litter, you know, those types of activities in the city. But issues, the river is subject to a very crowded arena of government regulatory agencies already between EPC and SWF MUD and the TAC and River Board and the, the port and the Army Corps, and, I mean, the list goes on and on. I said EPC already, I guess, but I don't want to stray into somebody else's areas of responsibility, particularly outside of the city. That, to me, doesn't, that, that concerns me. And the watershed language, if we're talking about the watershed as it applies to within the city of Temple Terrace, and Mr. Lewis is right, that's probably the whole city, that's okay, I don't mind that, because, okay, I don't live near the river, but activities at my home in Temple Terrace do have an impact on the river, so I don't mind that. That, that makes, you know, storm drains don't go to the river, that's the kind of activity. But that doesn't say that here, it just says the watershed. So, I mean, our task force is looking at garbage dumps in Pasco County, I don't think that's appropriate. In fact, I think it's inappropriate. There was a couple other things in here that I'm concerned about that, that looked like additions, and so this bullet really bothers me, and I don't know if we missed it in 2020 or if, I don't, I'm glancing at it now, I mean, I read it earlier, but page two, the third bullet up from the bottom, says ensure that future development is consistent with the preservation and conservation of the Hillsborough River watershed. Okay, this is not a regulatory board. This is an advisory board to this body. And that bullet seems to imply some role in evaluating proposed development, and that's not what this board exists to do. We have professional staff, we have members on the, we already are involved in the regulation of the river at a much higher level. We, Councilmember Fernandez is a voting member of the River Board, we have staff and other appointees that are appointed to the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee to the River Board, we have an appointed representative on the Marine Law Enforcement Board. We already have these higher-level representatives that are either appointed by this body or, in this case, elected by the residents to serve in these capacities, and I, I see some of this as kind of straying outside the boundaries here a bit and going into things that are, we already kind of have a seat at these tables.
Well, then that's what I think we are supposed to be doing tonight, is saying what, what does this council really look at this task force, what, what is their role?
Well, I think last year at goal-setting, we had a lot of discussion about this. And at that time, the council discussed expanding their role, because as you pointed out, for a while now, it's been, it's been kind of like an advisory board without a problem, without a mission, right? They, I mean, they'd get together and meet, you were the liaison back then, I mean, they'd get together to meet, it's like, okay, well, the water levels are good largely because of lower river supplementary strategies employed over the years by SWF MUD, and so...
And other sources of water for City of Tampa.
Right, right, so the original, the original mission, which was very narrowly defined, kind of went away due to, due to events. And so they didn't have a lot to do, and so they were looking for things to do. And we discussed in March of last year to expand their scope into maybe invasive species, which they've done a terrific job with that, you know, that, into, I don't know, is there, you know, some way to promote, you know, drought-resistant landscaping for people, those kinds of things in the city of Temple Terrace that would have a positive effect on water consumption and the quality of water in the river? I remember when I was on the task force, we used to go inspect the outfalls periodically on a boat. We were concerned about what went down the storm drains and how can we mitigate that? Those are all things that are, I think, beneficial for them to engage in, and that was an expansion of their mission last year. I remember going to their meeting and, I don't remember if you were assigned yet or whether you were still, but I remember going to their meeting and presenting the council's discussion to their, to their board about, these are some of the things that the council would like to, you asked us to expand your scope, and we heard you, and we talked about it, and these are some of the areas that we think you could expand to, invasive species, the storm drains, that kind of thing. It was received kind of lukewarm. It was, they, some of them, not everybody, but some of the board members in it were, accused me of trying to take the focus off the river, and that, you know, our core mission is the river, and they, oh, you're trying to take our attention off the river, and we need to be more involved in the river, the river, the river. And then they started talking about, you know, landfills up in Pasco County and all that kind of thing. Okay, that's not what the council talked about, right? This is not, so there seems to be kind of a difference in vision unless the council has changed their vision from March of last year. There seems to be a difference of what we think they exist to do and what they think they exist to do. So I, I'm not comfortable with the watershed language, and I'm not comfortable with the development review, it doesn't say review, it says ensure that future development is consistent. I'm not comfortable with that. I don't, I don't want language in there, in my opinion, that tends to gravitate towards another regulatory agency. That's just my two cents. You got it, go ahead.
I tend to agree. I, I don't like the watershed references, and I don't, I, I, I'm not comfortable with most of the objectives. I think they're too far-reaching, frequency determined by, you know, SWF MUD presence determined by the task force. No, 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 we can't, we don't, we, that's not what they're there for. So I have, I have a problem with the objectives, and I do have a problem with the broad terminology, the associated watershed. I would like to see them rework this if they could.
Okay, so, let me ask you, I don't want to, these are volunteers that are really doing terrific work for us here, and I don't want to, you know, just like, oh, no, we're not doing this, I don't want to do that.
I mean, I don't have a problem with continuing, continuing the relationship with SWF MUD at our monthly meetings at a frequency determined by the task force. The task force asks SWF MUD to come to the meetings and, and update them on what's going on. SWF MUD doesn't necessarily ask to come unless they have something that they're trying to promote. I mean, that's, that's just them being, oh, we haven't heard from SWF MUD, they haven't, they haven't had something to present to us, we, we need to have them come at a certain meeting and tell us what's going on with the flow over the lower river and, or over the dam and, and where we are in, in water levels. I mean, that's, that's still within the advisory capacity, but I'm, I would agree, just saying watershed doesn't limit it to Temple Terrace.
But it could. We could, we could add language in there, this is the watershed that's within the city.
Yes.
We could do that. So let me, let me ask you this, Councilmember Fernandez, since you're the liaison, we can't task you to do anything, but would you be willing to meet with them, maybe, maybe turn their next meeting into a workshop of sorts? And since you're the liaison, you kind of take this back and say, these are some of the concerns, can we work on this to better?
Yes, and, but what I was actually thinking is that our goal-setting will happen before that, and I was thinking that it might be a good idea for us to discuss at the goal-setting where, because it's one thing to say, okay, we think you should expand, and, and we like looking at invasive species, but what do we really expect this task force to do? You know, are we going to encourage the task force to, to organize more events like this or, or just educate people that these are invasive species? Like, I, I think maybe we need to discuss more about the practical application of how this task force would operate to fulfill the, the goals that the council sees for this task force.
Well, I think we're pretty close to getting, we can, we can probably nail that down here, I would think. We're pretty, I, I think we're...
I mean, I'm willing to do it here, I just didn't know if it was going to be too long a discussion.
Well, but our goal-setting is going to be full, too. So, in my mind, I go back to what we established at our goal-setting last year, and I don't, my opinion on it hasn't changed. We talked about them branching out into the eradication of, of the invasive species, which they've done, they've proven that they can do that very effectively. That's, I think that's good. I'm glad that they did that, and I'm glad, like, to see them continue to do that. Public outreach, I think they do a tremendous job at that, when they set up their tables and they, you know, they go to events and they, I think they do a tremendous job with that, and we budgeted some money for them to have some swag giveaways, you know, inexpensive things to promote litter abatement, those kinds of things. The water goat is something that they, really, the River Watch is the ones that got the water goats, and they should be monitoring the water goat. Issues involving storm drains, I think, are appropriate to this. That's the watershed piece, the watershed within the city of Temple Terrace. Outfalls, making sure the outfalls are functioning properly in conjunction with staff, those are things that we, you know, those, those are all things that we talked about last spring. In my mind, it hasn't changed. Councilmember Abel?
The other thing I remember we mentioned was about Florida-friendly landscaping and water conservation.
That's right, we did.
Advocacy, and maybe some sort of program, proposing a program for that.
That's right, we did, you're right. Thank you, forgot that.
So I have a question about the practical application. So if you, they, they had an invasive species project that was very successful, more successful than they expected.
Yes.
So then the question is, what's the role or who, so you, you pull the invasive species, but nature will fill that with something. So is it, do we just want to pull the invasive species, or do we want somebody that's also going to look at what should be put back or how to maintain that area once you've pulled the invasive species? I don't, this is why I was going to bring up at the goal-setting, but, because you, we could just have a program where we just pull the invasive species periodically and leave it at that. Or we could have a program where we pull invasive species and then we try to reseed or replant with native that's appropriate for the location. Or we could have a situation where once we pull everything, it just keeps getting mowed, we just keep it mowed down so it doesn't come back. I, I, that's one of my questions that...
Well, I will defer to our environmental scientists here, but I think the Brazilian peppers are an invasive species that grow along the shore of the river.
Yes.
And taking them out is sufficient, that we don't, we let nature grow whatever grows on the shore of the river that's native, you know, or we keep it mowed or whatever, that's kind of a public works thing.
Nature's growing Brazilian pepper plants.
Good point. But, yeah, I don't, I don't, truthfully, I don't envision replanting as part of...
That's what I'm just asking, is as part of the removal of the invasive species, is it, are we just looking at the removal, or are we also looking at?
Well, they can certainly recommend that an area be replanted with something if it's appropriate, and there's a big gouge in the shoreline or something, sure, that would be within their purview, yeah, yeah.
That's, I mean, that's, that's my only thing. I, I don't think, I don't think that we need to monitor landfills, because we don't have any landfills in the city. And I don't think, and this is an advisory board, so I don't think that they should be ensuring that development has, they can't ensure anything about development.
So do you feel comfortable enough?
Yeah.
Meeting with them to kind of hash through this and see if we can get something that's workable?
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
For me.
City manager, you have anything to add to this, or staff, that, I know this directly involves you guys, too, so...
No, I think we'll, we'll defer for direction from the council. If you want us to research anything regarding shoreline protection, replanting, we can do that at a direction in the future, once you make a better determination which we want to go. We can do any of that.
Okay, well, I, I think we all are pretty comfortable, given Councilmember Fernandez a little leeway here to work with you, and, you know, that seems appropriate to me. I trust that Allison's going to, if you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and I see we lost Mr. Lewis. Okay, so we do not, I believe we do not need a vote of action on this, is that correct, Mr. Schoen? We can just refer this back for further work?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what everybody wants to do? Okay. All righty, thank you all. Next is a resolution approving adjustments to fiscal year '24, budget number Q3, and, no, there he is. And, no, there he is. Mr. Ingram, our finance director, is here to explain. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. At the conclusion of quarter two fiscal year 24, there were a few items that require a budget adjustment for unplanned or unknown expenditures with matching unplanned unknown revenues. Exhibit 1 provided a description of each item, the fiscal year 24 expenditure and the previously unbudgeted revenue source to fund the expenditure. A summary of these items are as follows. In the Water and Sewer Utilities Fund, there are the following two adjustments. A CD 225M dry prime diesel pump with sound attenuated enclosure costing $96,375. This item was included in the fiscal year 24 capital budget at $90,000. The remainder of the cost of $6,375 from un, is being added to the budget with a matching revenue amount of $6,375 from unbudgeted fixed asset sales. This purchase is being approved, actually, I think it's the next item on the agenda, is being put through for approval tonight through resolution. $20,228 needed to complete a $67,720 purchase approved by resolution on April 2nd, 2024, for the purchase of a 2024 F250 XL Super Duty Supercap. It was approved with a $47,492 appropriation included in fiscal year 24 and the remaining cost of $20,228 coming from current year unbudgeted fixed asset sales. In the general fund, we have the following. A $37,748 purchase of fly motion drones with accessories and trainings with funds from a FDLE grant. $12,001 for a vehicle repair with funds from the receipt of an insurance payment through our FMIT auto insurance. $9,580 received through United Healthcare Wellness Incentives specifically for wellness program expenditures. And finally, in the Community Investment Tax Fund, we have the following. An additional $50,000 added to City Hall renovations for flooring installation to be funded through our CIT reserves. Staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution approving the adjustments to the fiscal year 2024 budget and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment? Councilmember questions? Councilmember Schisler?
Yes. Thanks, James. I do have one question and it, it kind of relates to this of the, the top two items are budget adjustments based on future sales of fixed assets, correct? Or anticipated?
No, no. Not future, but we, actual sales, we have, we've already got the money.
Okay, we got the money, okay. My, my question then is related to, not necessarily this, but the last budget adjustments we made. We had the same thing with some items that we're going to put on consignment with the, the place on 301. Did we actually reckon, did we realize those revenues or is it still in process?
Uh, no, we did.
We did?
We did realize those revenues.
Okay.
We've, Jason, our public works director, Warren Feltz, has done a great job in getting some of our old equipment out on auction and getting money for it, getting sales that we didn't plan for.
Thank you. I'm good.
Other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez.
So with regard to the sales of the fixed assets and equipment, right now, I mean, obviously, your budget adjustment is to offset the unanticipated expense, but has, are the revenues higher than the expenses that we're offsetting and where are they, if they are?
Um, the revenues are higher. They are in the, we had the revenues for vehicle assets in particularly sanitation and the 410 Water and Sewer Utilities. Just to give you an example, in the Water and Sewer Utilities Fund, we got $36,740 in asset sales. We're using 26, 26 and a half thousand dollars tonight of that 36,740. So we actually have, that's 10,000 excess revenue that we have for those fixed asset sales.
Okay. So I just, I just wanted to, to point that out because if somebody was looking or listening, they might say, well, how, how was it possible that you sold an asset that matches the expense you need? And that's not the case. You're taking the.
A portion.
The revenue and you're taking a portion and applying it to the expense and the remainder is sitting in unallocated fund balance or?
Yeah, it's, it's sitting basically in the, in this case, the Water and Sewer Utility Fund as a revenue. You know, for budget purposes, we have to always balance.
Right.
To zero. That's why we match it with the same, even though we received more money for the sale, unless we have something else that comes up where we need $10,000 or less, that will just be, at the end of year, go back into the, the Water and Sewer Fund.
To be available for the next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Some move to approve.
Move to approve. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. Discussion of the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Next item is a resolution approving the purchase of a CD 225M dry prime diesel pump with the sound attenuated enclosure and our public utilities director, Troy Tinch, is here to explain. And anything that starts out with a CD 225M is bound to be expensive.
Not too terribly bad. I guess it is a little bit pricey and actually it came in just a touch above what we budgeted. Jim brought that forward and during his presentation. So I'm here tonight to request a approval of a resolution to purchase this new diesel pump. The pump is designed as a high-flow pump. It's meant to really service our master lift stations. We have three of those throughout the city. Those are our higher-capacity system, so we needed to have a pump that could match that capacity need in the event of emergency, loss of power, if there was an issue with the diesel generator on site, which does periodically happen, or if the electrical pumps themselves, we had issues with those. So it is a trailer-mounted pump. It does, as you mentioned, have a sound attenuator, so it's what we call a quiet run pump. It's something that could easily be run in a neighborhood and not make a lot of racket or cause it issues for people who may be trying to sleep. It was specked out through the Florida Sheriff's Association bid, so it was bid through that process. That said, staff recommend city council approve this resolution to purchase a new diesel-powered pump and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there members of the public who wish to comment? Seeing none, councilmember questions? Councilmembers? I have a quick one. So is this, this pump attached to, does it permanently live at a lift station or is this one that we move around when there's a problem at a lift station?
Right. So all of our master lift stations and actually most all of our lift stations in general have a, a, a quick hookup, we call it a quick hookup. And so this pump will live actually over at the White Way Water Treatment Plant. And when we have an issue with one of those master stations, we'll bring that out, pull that out to that station.
Okay.
We'll quickly hook it up and then get that station back online.
Okay. That's why it's trailer-mounted.
Yes.
I assumed that, but I wasn't clear.
Yes, absolutely. It's about the size of NF-150.
Okay.
In weight and, so.
Okay. If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of the CD, CD 225M dry prime diesel pump with sound attenuated enclosure.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion of the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you.
Resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution adopting a revised, revised site plan and building elevations for property located at 13102 North 56th Street and our community development director, Mike Sherman, will explain. Good evening, Mr. Sherman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council tonight, for the council's consideration, is there a, a site plan 210, excuse me, 2309? Is a site plan review application for revisions and modifications to a previously approved site plan, site plan 2103. It's for 40, 7200 square foot retail office structure located at 13102 North 56th Street. The owner's Dr. Mohammed Salah and the applicant's representative, J.D. Aspas, is in the audience tonight. He's with Sycamore Engineering. So everybody knows where this is, but for the people in the audience and to review real quick for our council, this is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of 131st Avenue and North 56th Street. The zoning is commercial general. The future land use map category is commercial. The size is a little over half an acre at .61 acres. And the approval was tonight for site civil and building plant elevations. A little bit of background, up in June of 2022, this council approved the site plan 2103 and this was for a one-story, 7200 square foot multi-tenant structure. The maximum height of that was 19 feet at the decorative parapets located over the main entryways. Access was off 100, east 131st Avenue. There were 24 parking spaces provided and they're located behind the structure where the parking lot is adjacent to the residential properties to the west. And there's a six-foot landscaped buffer along the property line which separates the residential property line from commercial uses. And here are the approved elevations that the council approved and the applicant submitted in the first round. So after the approval by the council, the building elevations and site plans was most modified, the building permit was then issued when we realized that the elevations were not the ones approved by the staff. We reached out to Dr. Salah and discussed it with them. He put his team on it to bring it back to us and work on this to get it back to the city council, the DRC met, and now it's to the council for consideration tonight. So the proposed modifications would be still for the 7200 square foot multi-use tenant. The parapets were modified with columns and these are 22 feet located above the main entryways. One handicap space was relocated, so that's all they were required was one, and actually, this is at a better location. It's more to the interior of the site, more proximate to the entryways. And the modified stormwater management plan was also provided by the applicant. And these are the new building, building elevations. So the modifications for the site civil plans would include the relocation of the handicap parking space, modification of the stormwater control, control, control structure. The building elevations, modifications, parapets were eliminated and replaced with columns. The columns are now a bit higher than the parapets and they're 22 feet. The decorative cement finish over masonry walls were added. North and south elevations and window finishings have been modified. The east and west modifications and facings is broken up a bit differently than was previously approved. The windows on the north and south elevations were reduced from six to two and electrical panels were moved to the north side of the building to improve. This is actually a really good, good movement on the side of the electrician. And these are pictures of the buildings right now. This is the east side of the building facing North 56th Street. These are views from 133rd and the north side of the property. You'll see the north side of the property's got some pretty lush landscaping buffering into the adjacent commercial property. This is the front of the multi-use center. As you see, it's facing the property, excuse me, facing the parking lot and the back, so to speak, is turned to North 56th Street. These are shots of the stormwater facility that was some minor modifications. The DRC, we had a review with this, went around with the applicant. They're very responsive to a request for information. We were working this, trying to get it on this agenda, so there's one condition which we want to add to the, to the motion and that's the modification of the stormwater plans are approved by the stormwater management, by the Southwest Florida Water Management District in the city engineer prior to their certificate of occupancy. And I can stand for any questions, the applicants in the audience tonight, if the council wants to ask them anything.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, is the applicant wish to speak, Mr. Sherman? Do you know? Okay. Councilmembers, are there questions? Councilmember Abel.
So this building is already complete?
It's close to being completed. The majority of the outside and the shell of the building is completed. They're working on the interiors or will be very shortly.
Thank you.
I have a comment, not a question.
Questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez?
The modification of the stormwater, that, does that need to be approved by the city before that? Who has to actually say, okay, this, this stormwater collection system is correct for the site?
Regulatory agency is the Southwest Florida Water Management District and they will issue a modified environmental resource permit for this, I believe, or a modified permit for this. And then the city engineer's going to look at that and hopefully he'll agree with that as well.
So I guess my question is, for a developer, when they're, when they're modifying, especially it's Florida, we get rain and we're, and we're very sandy, when you're modifying stormwater collection, do you need to get your design approved before you build it from these regulatory agencies or are there just common practices that you can design it and then you know that it's going to meet the criteria?
I believe the final permit, ma'am, has to be submitted to the, we have to have it at CO.
Okay.
The laws changed a number of years ago. I believe it, it used to be where, when you start the project, you had to have it and now it's changed, I believe, at the COs when, by Florida law, we would need the, the permit from the district. Yes.
Good afternoon. J.D. Aspas, Sycamore Engineering. I am the engineer advocate for the project and the agent for the owner also. So modification to the stormwater system is required approval, approval from whatever city or SWIFT. However, we have minor modification. So it's really, and we have, of course, discussion with Mr. Sherman and Mr. Anderson, the city engineer, and it's really minor. And I accepted the condition, even it's really a very minor change. And the same way, we went and requested certification from SWIFT and we agree, gonna submit it before the CO on this. So there's nothing major to be worried about, about the stormwater system. So everything is a really minor change of that.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have questions, Mr. Sherman. How did we wind up with the building that's different than the one we approved?
So nor, so what happens when the building plans are submitted for the building official to review? If there's a site civil plans, they're also submitted at the same time. The planners are supposed to look at this, see what was approved by the council and look at the plans that were submitted, the elevations and the site plan, to make sure that they line up with what was approved. In this instance, the planner did not do that.
Can I?
So why did you, sir, you're the owner's agent, why would you have changed the building elevations and not brought it to the attention of the city when you?
Okay, of course, I'm. Okay, of course, I'm civil engineer. I'm responsible anything outside the building, but I can't speak on behalf of the owner in this regard. It's really my-
But you're the owner's agent.
Correct, yes, sir. But I'm trying to say, I'm be sure, I'm not the architect. I'm not, I mean, so really the modification, if you look into it kindly, it is really minor modification. And I understand, it's like one of the thing I see is from six window to, from six window to two window. And there, north and south elevation. And this is, I'm gonna be, I agree with you, this is a change and should be brought up. However, coordination came by the contractor and the owner. I was not outside of it. And it seemed in discussion is not completed also and they went execute it, but they's not completed it. So Mr. Sherman is advising completely that need to be approved by the city on this regard. But really, the best of their ability, they thought it's really minor change on this here. However, there's no change to the strict structure and safety issue. See, we're not talking about like structure chain, square footage. There's nothing to change on that. The same way with the site. If you notice, the site a change which is like the handicap replaced because they noticed it. It might be, it's not good idea to be in front of the door. That was replacement. So it came the judgment through them that it's minor change in this. And there's not safety issue concern that they make a change to the safety issue without approval.
Well, I understand there's no safety. I don't care about the handicap thing. You guys work that out.
Sure.
But this building does not look like what we approved. I wouldn't consider this to be minor. It doesn't even look like the same building. And part of the discussion at the site plan approval, because I was there, I remember this. And part of the discussion was, what's this building going to look like on 56th Street? Because essentially, you put the back of the building out on 56th.
Correct.
And the plans that we approved are much different than what this building turns. So in all my years on council, I don't remember anybody ever getting the site plan approved and then building something different and then coming back right before it's done to say, we want a modification of the site plan.
Well, respectfully, Mayor, this is started in November last year. I understand the building completed now, but we have been, we submitted in, I believe, the best of my ability, November. So we do about five months ago or more. So it was not completed. It's not happened after completion. It was modification during the construction. I mean, it noticed a little bit different and what Mr. Sherman, I think they arranged meeting with him to discuss it. Or he found that, I could not recall exactly, in this. And based on that, it came back that, well, this chain need to be come to the council on this here. So, and I'm gonna tell you, also, the reason with the change came back and with the discussion with the architect, it tried to have two elevation from two side, as you brought up kindly just a minute, a second ago, that we trying to make two facade, one on 56th and one to the back area. And does not, and that was the reason with this change came back and add some element to make it more appealing from both side.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Sherman, I have a question for you. So what happens to this project if we don't approve this modification and make them build what they said they were gonna build?
I think at this point, the council, the only thing that I would, I would think y'all could do is ask for more architectural features to get it as close to the shell that was approved and the elevations that were approved by the council.
So follow-up question, and I don't want to belabor the point, you know, the water over the dam, so to speak. But are there steps that we need to take to prevent this from happening again? When we assume, when we approve a site plan that contains elevations, we kind of assume that that's what we're gonna get, not something different that they built it and now we're kind of stuck with it. I mean, it's not that bad. It's not, but it is different. And we didn't get to chime in on that. Yes?
So first of all, I think what Mr. Sherman said, and just to reiterate, so staff, in this case, let me back up. We have not had an incident that I'm aware of in recent history where a developer gets approved plans and basically builds something completely different, which is, I mean, the building's the same, but the facades look extremely different. This was caught, and actually, I want to recognize Councilmember Schisler, because he actually mentioned it after one of our meetings, I believe, and reiterated for a lot of us, like, you know, that does look odd, doesn't it? And so we had staff go back and look at it. And that's when they realized that they, the plans were different, the building plans were different from the actual site plan approval facade. So what staff has been trying to do for the last several months, to the point of the gentleman mentioned about November, is trying to get the developer, developers team to come up with a solution that resembles what was approved by the city council, get it as close as possible to the city council. And that's what they've been trying to do to get to this point. And today, they're coming before you because this is the best, I believe, that they could accomplish based on the building. The building does look, does look better than it did when it, when we first caught this. I mean, it was pretty much the back of the building. It would just service access doors. I think now you look at it and they, there's been a good faith attempt by the developer to make it seem like it's a front of the building facing 56th, not the rear service entrance. Not the situation we'd want to be in. And hopefully, it's not a situation that will repeat itself in the future.
It's part of standard operating procedures for the planners to take a look at what was approved by the council. I can assure you, we've had that discussion internally now and it won't happen again.
Okay. Other questions?
Just comments.
Okay. I think we're done with questions. Thank you, thank you very much. Councilmember Schisler.
I, when I brought this up six months ago or whatever it was, it was like, I watched this thing being built. It's like, it's the back of the building. It's the flat back of the building. And it's not, it's not a precedent. We did the, we did the same thing down with Building A, down by the fountains. But you had access through and through. Every, every, every location, every unit looked, it could have looked like the front. This absolutely looked nothing like the front. And I look at these drawings, these renderings, they look almost identical. And we're still looking at the back of a building on 56th Street. I don't see any windows. I don't see any doorways that you can see through. I mean, you can, you go down to the fountain shops and you can go in, you can enter through those, through those entrances, through those doorways. I don't know. This is, to me, it's a lot more than just the north and south elevations. This is, these don't look, the front and back don't look at all like. These drawings make it look pretty similar, but what we have up there is not. I'm not sure what we can do about it at this point, except, you know, request more visibility, make it look more like the front of the building. I just, it just doesn't look right.
Councilmember Abel.
Yeah, I agree. I drove by it and I was disappointed to see that it didn't match what we approved. And I didn't really see the degree to which it didn't match until I compared it in our backup materials. But I think, as you said, I mean, we have an expectation that when we approve something, we want to see that built, not something else. And the only reason that I think this is coming to us now is because Councilmember Schisler mentioned it. Otherwise, it just would have happened. And I'm not comfortable with that.
All right. Well, the only thing to consider here is, well, there's a few things to consider. One is that our previous planner seemed, apparently dropped the ball on this because there was a building permit issued that I'm assuming, where'd it go? Where'd it might go? I'm assuming that the building permit was issued based on renderings of what was actually built. Is that what I heard you say? So the argument can be made, if I'm-
Yes, sir.
Just correct me if I'm wrong here. The argument can be made, like, well, in the application for a building permit, we showed you the pictures of what we were gonna build and you gave us a permit.
And we built it.
And we built it. And so, so the city doesn't have clean hands in this either, although I would argue that the developer changed the drawings and gave it to an unsuspecting planner. Well, who, then the planner's not going to assume that they've changed the drawings. But, you know, the only solution to this is that they not tear it down because it's the same footprint. But, I mean, they'd have to tear down the outside and build it the way that we approved them to be built. That's a pretty extreme. I don't know if you want to do that or not. I'd be willing to approve it, but I tell you what, I'm pretty upset that this happened. And I'm pretty upset not only with the former planner, but I'm also upset with the developer. This is supposed to be a professional developer and they know that this is shady. And so I would be supportive of approving it at this point because of the alternative is pretty dramatic. But, but I don't like it.
I mean, I have an issue because I know the developer knows what elevations were approved and knows the expectation that the council had because it's, it is right up on the street and it is supposed to look the way council originally approved it. I, obviously, the building is built. And I know that some of the issue was caused internally as well. It was a contributing factor for sure. But is there something we can do? What kind of exterior architectural features could be added to make it more attractive at this point?
Well, the only thing I was thinking is that y'all direct us to sit down with the architect and take what was approved, gussy it up or whatever, so it's just as close as possible to what was approved by the council and come back with new elevations and say, this is the, this is what was attempted to make it look more like what was approved by the council.
I'm okay with that.
Yes.
And not approve it or deny it tonight. Continue it to another time where we can come back with revised elevations and the council could consider them at that point. Because I believe there's more that could be done to make it more similar.
Okay. I'm just trying to think here. Sorry, folks, it takes me a while to think. Councilmember Abel.
I mean, if our input is valuable here, it's really the doors. The doors are the very unappealing part because that's what it makes look like the back more than anything else. I don't know how the rest of you all feel, but it's the doors, so.
Couldn't you rectify that, though?
Well, that was one of the discussion points that we had with the applicant and this, you see what their fix was.
But I don't know, I mean, I'm not in this industry, so I don't know what other possibilities. I mean, you have to have door, you have to have back doors.
There's back doors now. They can cover them more with what it looked like possibly when it was approved by the council.
That's what we're asking for.
I think there were always going to be doors back there. They just looked more like the front side of the building than the rear side of the building. And now there's doors with it. I mean, it looks better than when Councilmember Schisler brought it up, but it still looks like the rear of the building. And that's not what was approved by the council. It was almost a mirror image of the front.
City attorney, any input or are we on the right track or do?
I think that hopefully the developer and his representative can see where this is going and can listen to you. And I know, I was at one of the meetings. I know that they did come here and work with staff on making changes once it was discovered. And hopefully, they'll be willing to do that again. So if you can make a motion to continue this.
That's kind of what bugs me the most, is that they came here and made changes after it was discovered.
Correct.
If it had not been discovered and brought up, who knows what this, right? So, okay. So is it the councils wish to make a motion to continue this and give staff an opportunity to talk to the developer about what possible changes could be made?
Yes. Do we need to continue it to a particular date?
I, you don't need to do that. I would just, you know, or table this. Then it's, then it's out there and it's a date unspecified.
Move to table? Just to brush it to table the resolution?
I mean, I'm assuming that they're gonna, they'll want to do this as quickly as possible. They're not gonna get a CO until this is resolved, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second.
Discussion of the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Item is tabled. Thank you, Mr. Sherman, sir. Last item is a resolution approving the addition of a full-time utility billing manager position and related salary and benefits to the fiscal year 24 budget. Our city manager, Carlos B., you will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the council is aware, we have been conducting an audit of our utility billing office for the last couple of months at this point, looking at it from the basic as personnel, processes, software, et cetera, looking at the full gamut, trying to find ways to improve customer service in that office. As you know, we've had some challenges with errors being made, lack of follow-up, delinquent accounts. Again, we're not pursued and things of that nature. So we are, we've been made a concerted effort to fix that. The staffer that is looking at our project administrator, one of her recommendations from her findings after spending a couple of months downstairs or in the first floor here, City Hall, I should say, is that the office really requires a manager. This office used to have a manager prior to several years ago, at which point the incumbent retired. That position was not filled under a prior administration. And since that time, things that could have been resolved reasonably quickly have been left to fester and they've compounded. And so we have a situation right now that requires a lot of TLC. There's a fair amount of folks that work in that office, around 10 people that work in that office. And so we need to have somebody who's held accountable for that, who can do the daily reconciliations, who can deal with the customer issues, who can follow when we have software issues and make the calls and track those things. So those things will take several days to resolve. And right now, people don't have the ability to do that because they're dealing customers and there's really nobody with a complete oversight of the entire operation to handle that. This position would be funded entirely from the business, the enterprise funds. So there would be no impact on the general fund. It would add an FTE to the city's overall count. We're looking, obviously, we're starting to look at the budget for next year. So we don't know exactly what our total FTEs will be, if we may decrease, et cetera. So, but right now, this would add an FTE to the existing count. But we feel it's very much needed. We, if you approve it tonight, we, the first thing we'd want to do tomorrow is start to put the ad out and try to recruit for this position. That's how serious we feel that we need somebody in there to take over. And they have a lot of work to do to make it, get on the right path.
Mr. B., council member questions? Well, are there members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Okay. Council member questions for Mr. B. or Councilmember Schisler?
No, no, I have a comment, not a question.
Oh, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the documents, we say that we have a salary savings projected in the finance department. It's, we don't mean the finance department itself. We're talking about the budget to, because the finance department's in the general fund.
Sure. So our utility billing staff is within the finance department. So organizationally, they're within the finance department. And you're correct, I understand your question. And actually, if Jim wants to, can you help maybe come up to the podium and try and address that question?
Within the utility billing, which is in, under the enterprise fund, not general fund, there is savings. For one thing, the project administrator that we hired, we're only gonna end up spending about five months of that salary in fiscal year 24, five, maybe six months. We did look at all the numbers. We did look at all the numbers. I was concerned, you know, is this going to put us over budget? Although, I certainly agree that it's needed. But looking at the numbers, we found out that it, it's tight, but it will, it should be able to fall right around what we budgeted in terms of personnel expenditures for that particular part of the water and sewer fund, the utility building.
Okay.
Department, division.
Then, question with regard to management. What we found, then, so, so basically, there were mistakes happening in the billing process that have cost the city money. Is that correct?
They have, there have been, correct, there have been errors made where delinquent accounts were, were not necessarily followed up on. We made a concerted effort over the last several months to follow up on all these delinquent accounts, and I think we've had closure on almost all of them at this point. There were just also customer service issues, so for example, when a customer has a water bill issue, there might be an error, or there might be just an issue they're trying to follow up on. Those things were not getting followed from point A to point Z. I mean, there were people who were dropping the ball, and I can't necessarily blame the staff, per se. There were no standards, no standard operating procedures in their office when people are hired on. They, we found out that they're sort of being informally trained by the person at the counter next to them, which, you know, that person learned from somebody else. By the time you get to the last person hired, the means and methods can be completely different from what was originally intended. So, that's where we need someone, and our project administrator's working right now in developing those standard operating procedures, leaving that in place, so that if the utility building manager is approved and hired, that person can start right there, at least have some, a book and some documentation, and build up from there.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you. Other questions? If there are no questions, is there discussion?
Yes, oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember, Mike, guy's name was Mike, wasn't it? When Mike retired, I remembered there was discussions on whether to replace him or not. And we had a whole bunch of other issues that were developed with personnel throughout the finance department as well. I was very glad to see that the audit was being conducted to figure out what's actually happening with internally to the, to the billing, to the billing department. And I think it's a good move. We did have software issues, we've had a multitude of issues, and I know finances worked very diligently to clean house from top to bottom, to fix many of their problems, and I view this as fine tuning. I think it's needed, it's, I thought it was necessary back then, but the administration chose not to do, not to fill that position. And I'm, I'm glad that Jim and his crew have come to this realization that we need to get this, this position fixed. Again, it's split, you're on the second floor, you're on the first floor, you need supervision in that department, and I wholeheartedly support it. And with the funky allocations that we have between general fund and, and the utility funds, I don't believe it'll be any kind of a budgetary issue going forward, so I support the move.
Would you like to top that off with a motion?
Absolutely. I move to approve the resolution to additional full-time utility billing manager position and related salary benefits to the fiscal '24 budget.
Second.
Second, discussion?
No, I agree, I think it's necessary.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution passes. Thank you for Mr. B., for your work on this. Carryover council business, anybody?
Follow-up question.
Yes.
Okay. And I know he's already sat down, Mr. Tinch, but we have, have we had an update recently on the public works projects, particularly the building, and, or?
How about?
And the, and the, pardon?
Okay. Go ahead.
No, I don't want to.
I don't know, for council business, I suppose that's a good time.
I didn't know, that's why I'm asking, this is the right time to do it, you know?
Yes, Mr. B.
Actually, at your next meeting, you're going to be provided, if I'm not mistaken, with a ream of quarterly reports, including one on our capital project.
I'm done, I'm good, I'm good.
Very good, thank you. Council business, carryover council business, we're still on council business. No new business in board reports? New business? Anybody? Two things real quick. One is, I have a packet that I'll be emailing in, submitting tomorrow for a grant from the Florida League of Mayors for a, I should ask, in retrospect, I guess I should have asked your permission, but I didn't think you'd oppose me asking for a grant, for partial funding for a centennial mural, the one that's going on the north side of this building. So, it's only open to mayors to submit for that. So, many thanks to Nancy Hudson, and to your executive assistant, Jeanne Barlow, for helping me come up with the packet, so. One other quick item is, I have now found myself on the board of the Suncoast League of Cities. The acting president, or the acting mayor of Clearwater, did not win her election, her reelection, and so she was on the board, and so everybody kind of moved around, and I was kind of drafted. I think they just wanted a Hillsborough person, and must have been going to get somebody from Tampa, I'm it. So, the only reason I bring it up is if we have any particular legislative priorities as we get closer to the next session, I'd be in a position to advocate for that organization to join us in that, so. And that's all I have. Anybody else have any other new business or board reports? Okay, city manager? City attorney?
With, with the help of the Director of Community Development, this was, this is just to sort of do a preliminary announcement as to how we're going to handle an item that was going to be coming up on the agenda for May the 7th concerning the Davis Road project, and I'll defer to Mr. Sherman.
So, the council knows the rezoning for the Davis Road project was continued until May 7th. There has, we've been working with the applicant, trying to get them to respond to the questions, the concerns the council had, reduction of lots, dealing with elevations, stormwater, connection of the parks, and all the stuff that came out of that hearing. The applicants are not going to be ready to get us the stuff, so we can make our advertisement dates by May 7th. Today was actually the dead, the date, drop dead date that we had to get all the stuff to our city clerk. They didn't get it to us, and so we were not able to make our advertisement timeframes. Although, they are working to provide the information that the residents were looking for, and that the city council was looking for. They're not sure when they're going to be able to have all that together, so they want to continue the hearing date, not until time certain, but until they can get everything back together, provided to us, we'll review it, and if it, we believe it fits what the council's looking for, we'll then go through the regular, setting up a hearing date, doing our advertisements. But we wanted to let the council know tonight, because y'all were probably expecting it to be at the May 7th meeting, and it won't be there. So, and, and I'm not sure, you know, we can send letters to the property owners and let them know that as well, so they don't show up. And then, when we do, and we'll let them know that, you know, watch for the papers, and we'll be sending them letters for all 100, 100 feet of the property, where this will be rezoned, possibly rezoned, of the date and the time, and to show up for the hearings.
Mr. Sherman, if the council's desires to do that, what action would we need to take tonight?
Nothing tonight. This was, this was more to let people know who were going to probably show up on May 7th, so it was to give them another chance to, to know ahead of time that they can make their vacation or whatever, and not have to come here. But what I'll ask for council to do is, on May 7th, is to open the item, and then make a motion to continue it, and, you know, just continue it, but for an unspecified date. And then, when the applicant is prepared, it will be readvertized, and we'll hold the hearing then.
Okay.
In our discussions with the applicant, they think they'll be ready for the May 21st meeting, and by the May 7th meeting, we should know all that.
I hope they're not ready for the May 21st meeting, because I won't be here for that meeting, and I would really like to be here. I mean, I don't want to hold it up, but.
We can tell them it's not.
I have a lot of, you know, I missed the first one, and I have some thoughts on this, but, I mean, I, I know the earth doesn't stop turning if the mayor's not here, but I won't be here for that meeting, and I.
We can, we can let them know that it wouldn't be until the first June meeting, then.
It'd be great with me, I don't want to, you know.
Well, I think I would agree with you, because it certainly was an issue that all of council was concerned about, and I think we've learned from past council meetings that it's in our best interest to have all interested parties and.
If they're amenable to that, they might actually be relieved to get a little extra time, but, so.
Yes, sir, we'll let them know.
That good with everybody?
I was going to ask, I knew you were going to be going, one of the meetings, and may I just make sure which one, so that's.
Yeah, that's the one.
I was going to bring that up.
So, everybody's comfortable with this, what we're doing? Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
City Attorney, Stu, that's all you have? Anybody? Anything else to come before the council? Okay, we will be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.